Like to call this meeting to order. Can we please rise for pledge of allegiance? Can we get a roll call?
Yes, of course. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guneal.
Here.
Mayor Miller is absent and our town attorney is present.
Introductions, presentations, and proclamations.
We do not have any, Vice Mayor.
Okay, call to the public.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions amongst our audience. Vice Mayor did not have any submitted comment cards for call to the public.
Okay, would anybody like to speak? No? Okay. Current events, summaries, and reports. Can I get a status report? Mayor, council? None over here?
I got it. I was invited and honored to attend the Town of Kingman, Arizona's fifty-third annual Andy Divine Days Parade in celebration this past weekend. Great hospitality over there. Nice for our rural communities to talk to each other.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Okay, status report by our town manager Cindy Blackmore regarding town accomplishments and current and upcoming projects.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council. I just want to mention our upcoming event. This Tuesday, October third, is our National Night Out. This is our annual event for our community to come together with our police officers. It should be a great time for families to come out and interact, so we invite you all to come out and enjoy that. And on top of that, this year, our entertainment, we have a concert by a national country artist that's coming out and doing a concert right after the event. So everyone come out, enjoy hopefully the beautiful weather, and get to know your police officers. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you, Cindy Blackmore. Okay, consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Now, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to pull item five A. We will need a separate motion and vote to include the specific date to set a public hearing on that item.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. After reviewing the calendar on this proposed item for the public hearing, we realized that it's pretty, was pretty close to the Thanksgiving holiday. So staff is just recommending that we set that public hearing for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M., which is a different date and time that is in the published packet. Like I said, I think it makes a little more sense to get through that Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agendas, items A, B, C, oh, sorry, excuse me. B, C. B and C.
We need a motion to do A first. Second.
All in favor? Okay, I like some.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the notice of intention to set a public hearing on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. on the water and wastewater fees.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Action items. Public hearing and consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three five. Presentation by?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the Town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a requested rezone for a piece of property currently zoned AR five. The requested zoning district is two SR two. The applicant, Ms. Tarpley, is in attendance this evening for any questions that you might have. So as previously stated, the subject property is currently zoned AR five. It is five acres in size. To the north of this property, you have SR one and SR two parcels. To the south and to the east, you have AR five, and then to the west, you have SR two. Council might remember the subject property directly to the west of tonight's property was recently rezoned from AR five to SR two, I believe, at the beginning of this year. The applicant's intention with this rezone is to retain two acres and then at minimum two acres and then either sell off anywhere between two to three to her neighbor to the north here, so he can absorb that into his net acreage. Twenty fourteen general plan designates this subject property as medium-density residential, two acres or less, so the requested zoning district is in conformance. This item did go before the Planning Commission earlier this month. It did receive a vote of approval, so the Planning Commission forward town council a recommendation of approval for this rezone. Subject to the conditions found in attachment A. Go ahead and open up for questions or discussion. And attachment A is found on your screen right now.
Okay, questions, Bob?
No.
Any? Okay. Sherry?
No.
Tom? Okay. Any questions to the applicant?
No.
Nope.
No. None, okay. We're gonna make an opened public hearing.
Vice Mayor, I did not have any comment cards submitted for this item.
Okay, so we can close the public hearing? And entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I recommend I make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three five.
Second.
Does somebody?
All in favor? Yes, I do. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're good.
Was that a six? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I abstain.
Five.
Five and one abstain, thank you.
Okay, action item six B. Public hearing and consideration of possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three six.
Good evening, once again. This is a requested rezone is for a, the Antelope Valley Apartments. So this one's a little different. It is for a use that is already established and has been established since two thousand and four. The issue that arises with this, this piece of property is that it's currently zoned commercial light. So back when these apartments were constructed, commercial light allowed for apartments outright. That is no longer the case with our current zoning code. You need a conditional use permit or hard zoning to multifamily. Staff recommends that we do go for the multifamily route opposed to conditional use permit. Financing gets a little weird with conditional use permits. It's always best where we can to activate or act, or excuse me, promote hard zoning for uses. So just getting into it here, as stated, the subject property is approximately four point five acres in size and currently zoned commercial light. To the north is the American Legion and Ace Hardware Store. To the west is B and M Painting and several other commercial heavy parcels. To the south is Gabby's Rustic Eats, and to the east is Yavapai, Oklahoma State's. There are currently sixty-four apartment units on site. There is no proposal for expansion or anything like that. The property is intended to stay the same, and so they were constructed back in two thousand and three. Twenty fourteen general plan designates the subject property as commercial multifamily, so that requested rezone to multifamily is in conformance of the twenty fourteen plan. This item did go before the Planning Commission at the beginning of this month. It received a vote of approval, so they forwarded a recommendation of approval to town council. Subject to the conditions found in attachment A. Open it up for questions or discussion. The applicant is in attendance this evening and discussion, or in attachment A is found on your screens.
Okay, any questions from council?
This is just housekeeping, right? Basically getting in compliance, so.
Yeah, because they're currently considered a non-conforming use right now, so.
Nope.
Okay, question to the applicant? None? Okay, I'd like to open the public.
Vice Mayor, I did not have any comment cards on this item either.
Okay, anybody from the audience? None. Close the public hearing, entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three six.
Second.
Second, ma'am.
Annie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, action item six C. Public hearing and consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three seven.
Good evening again. Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the Town of Chino. The item before you is a requested rezone for a subject property located between North Road four and a half, west and four and a half, or excuse me, north four and a half. Excuse me, between north four and a half, west and road four north. The subject property is currently fourteen acres. The applicant is at attendance this evening. This is a request to rezone from AR five to SR one with the intent to develop a twelve lot, one-acre lot subdivision. And then the applicant is in attendance this evening. So immediately around this subject property are several different zoning districts. To the north and to the south are AR five. To the north, you have five parcels that were developed through lot splits. To the south, you have a roughly thirty-acre AR five parcel that is owned by an investment company. Further south, you have the Heritage Point and Appaloosa Meadows subdivision totaling approximately three hundred one-acre lots. To the west, you have the Windmill House in the commercial light designation. And then the J.C. Estates land, the Cortavana Development, currently fifty-five acres at entitled SR one. Further west, you have the Grasslands subdivision. And then to the east, you have a hundred and thirty-three acres entitled with the SR zero point one six, known as the West Meadows. The, they're entitled with a PAD, and they have approximately four hundred and seventy homes proposed for that lot. We haven't seen anything in sort of any sort of movement since the economy crashed back after this was approved, but they still do hold valid entitlements for four hundred and seventy lots directly to the east. So the subject property, per the twenty fourteen general plan, this subject property is designated as medium-density residential, two acres or less. The requested zoning district of SR one is in conformance. So with this ultimate goal of the rezone being a subdivision, the applicant did provide a conceptual lot layout. The proposal is for twelve lots, all one acre in size, all homes to be site-built, specifically restricted by the zoning to site-built only. The applicant specializes in site-built custom homes. The proposal is to be on well-inseptic. The closest water and sewer is on the east side of the highway at the intersection of Perkinsville and North Road one east. The applicant will be constructing a new east-west road dubbed Saddle Butte Place. It'll terminate in the cul-de-sac, and they will be responsible for proportional roadway improvements to North Road one west. This item did go before the Planning Commission at the beginning of this month. It did receive a vote of approval, so the Planning Commission forwards a recommendation of approval to town council. Subject to the conditions of approval found in attachment A. I'll go ahead and open it up for questions or discussion. The applicant is here this evening if you have questions for them, and then on your screen right now are the conditions of approval in attachment A.
Okay, questions from council? Shaker?
I have no questions.
Sorry.
This conceptual drawing is showing single-point ingress egress and twelve new wells and septic stuck in the ground?
Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility, and I know we can't force them, what is the northernmost water from Appaloosa Meadows to him?
Northernmost wa, like distance from Appaloosa?
Appaloosa Meadows water.
That'll be the closest water system with it being a private system.
I know we can't force him to go to it, but I wondered if he'd even checked to see. More wells and septic bothers me.
Understood. We can, the applicant is here. If you want to address that question to him, I know Appaloosa Meadows is considered subpar currently for a water provider, so.
Can you go back to the? Ingress egress?
One in, one out, same one. This is just a conceptual drawing, though.
Yes, sir.
This is not hardened fast yet.
No, if the rezone is approved, the development will have to come back for preliminary plat approval by council and final plat approval for council.
And we've got twenty-four feet of easement for the whole ingress egress?
Should have fifty, so fifty-foot width, and then the road improvements are twenty-foot width road, twenty-four foot, excuse me. But fifty-foot would be more than enough to adequately accomplish what our current standards are for town right away and road improvements.
Okay, any other questions?
It's okay for a conceptual drawing, but I would hope that the applicant would look more into improving his ingress egress and probably not much you can do about water and sewer, but should be looked into anyway by him, I would hope, anyway.
Understood.
Great. Okay. No further questions? We got questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
Just go back to your conditions. I just, I thought, okay, five years, okay, never mind. Number seven, I was looking at the number seven there. So i-if this gets going, when does that five-year clock start? Is it when preliminary plats are accepted?
I would say when the zoning is approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, no questions for the applicant? Okay, I'd like to open up for a public hearing.
Vice Mayor, I did have some comment cards submitted. First one is Carol Weber states yes on Chino Valley resident.
We live off of road five, above the nursery, essentially downstream of where this development is going to be, and
don't my stand.
Okay, I do. Anyway, the, when we bought our house five years ago, our, our property was rated at a four of ten in terms of flood risk. Our property is now rated at a seven of ten on flood risk, which is an enormous change in a five-year period. I can only attribute it to the development of Heritage Point, especially because Appaloosa Meadows has been there. But with Heritage Point, we had, we had a river through our, and we're at the low point, almost the lowest point on the street. And we had just an absolute river come through and totally destroy whatever yard we had. We had, we had already started, and it, it's, it's just getting worse, and I'm just afraid that this would just add to it. I believe in growth. I think a city, a town, excuse me, needs to grow or it dies, but I think I'm just worried that it's not measured enough. The growth is not measured enough right now. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Rose Misurentino. And yes, a Chino Valley resident.
Well, hello there. I've been a resident for thirty years right down the street from this planned subdivision. I have just a little under eight acres. I used to have eight until you guys bought the road in front of me. Anyway, I'm an equestrian. I have an arena, I have cattle, and I'm for growth, but one-acre parcels in a five-acre. Where are we gonna keep our rule, our wells? Septics, if they want to do this, maybe find an area that is not zoned, five-acre minimums. Let some of us horse people have a life in Chino Valley. Thirty years I've been here, I want to cry, you guys, because it's not up to me as a resident. It's up to you guys who we vote in and the people with big pockets and big money. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last submitted card I had.
Okay, any else, anybody else from the public? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing on this. Entertain a motion? Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Marbury a question?
Sure.
Sorry, Frank.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council.
All right.
Happy to answer anything.
You, you, this routinely comes up, and I, I'm just asking you to reiterate it, but the concern about flooding and the, if, if a project comes in upstream from a downstream resident, the engineering that goes involved in that does need to mitigate that, so it doesn't put more water on that property than with historically and naturally, right?
Right, the rate of flow, the way the code reads, the, the rate of flow from the runoff post-development should be the same rate of flow before development. So it might receive more physical volume of water, but the goal is to slow that rate down, so it doesn't come all at once. It trickles it out, so to speak.
So the one concern that was out would, that was presented regarding the flooding downstream would be would be looked at, they'd be tried, they'd make every effort to mitigate it, so it wouldn't enhance the flooding, right?
Right, our code is to try and restrict the, the rate of flow to historic levels prior to development.
Thank you, sir.
So you detain the water. You don't fully retain it, but you detain it.
I have a question for Frank. Have you seen an increase in water and flow heading north since the development?
It's, it's hard to quantify that.
Any complaints?
Was the, yes, especially last spring. We had a, a big big event, I guess you can say. It was a, as my dad would say, a frog strangler. We did see some overland flow in that area that I haven't, I've only been here six years, so when you talk about a hundred-year storm, it has a one percent chance of occurring, so the question is, how often does that happen? But, uh, but we did see a significant event with some overland flow in the areas that some of the citizens were talking about. They came across four and a half. That new road we constructed, we saw it come over there, kind of where, if you saw the sign where the J.C. Estates property was, kind of the east border of that, ran over there, and I'm sure continued up to five north. And we also saw for the first time since, since I've been here at least, some of the older resident folks that have lived here longer might have seen it, but the Appaloosa Detention Pond that's at the corner of four north and one west actually filled up and overtopped. Uh, four north.
I've seen that overflow.
So it, it was enough to overflow that, which is fairly uncommon. But, uh, you know, I can't say for sure if it was a fifty-year storm or a seventy-five-year storm or a hundred-year storm, but it, it was a big one.
I have one for you, Frank. Would detention ponds do better in here than drainage tracks?
We'll look at that in the technical portion of the review between preliminary plat and final plat, and yeah, we'll look and make sure they detain the water properly, so. I'm not sure how drainage tracks would work. I want to see detention and have their engineer verify that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Will I have Frank up here? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, entertain a motion?
I, prior to the motion, I would hope that the applicant takes into effect some of the statements that have been made and some of the problems that have been listed before he comes with his preliminary and final plats. And with that, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three seven.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Four ayes and two nays.
Four, two passes.
Okay, next is action item six D through L. Consideration and possible action to approve a cooperative purchasing agreement for the job order contracting services on public works horizontal or horizontal construction projects for the amount not to exceed one million. Frank?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. What I'm bringing to you tonight is, uh, we've got nine separate contracts, so it looks daunting, but it's really just one consideration. These are job order contracts that the City of Prescott has already gone through the procurement process and, uh, and approved, and they've got cooperative language in there, so we can utilize that and what I call piggyback on that for our for our city's use. So what we've got here is, uh, four vertical contractors that Prescott has, has brought on and five horizontal contractors. And, uh, in particular for the horizontal construction projects, I was actually on the committee that helped review those proposals for the City of Prescott, so, um, so I'm familiar. They had almost a dozen submittals, but they selected five for horizontal. And the vertical was done before I was on the committee, but, uh, went through that, and what a job order is for those not familiar, it's, uh, is it, how do they define it, Andrew? Indefinite delivery? There's some legal jargon there.
No, I think you hit it, Frank.
Okay.
It's in qualifications-based indefinite delivery contract. So it's not, the selection is not based upon the low bid like you would do in a typical Title Thirty-four acquisition. This is based upon qualifications, and then job orders come back under the main contract.
Right, so what we're looking to do here is approve the master contract. We actually approved a master contract with Shasta Pools, I believe, and then issued two job orders for them, one for plastering the pool and one for upgrading some of the pump equipment. So here would just be approval of these master contracts, and then we would come back to council with the job orders if they're over fifty thousand. Each individual job order would come back to council for a vote and approval, much like a a bid process, except we can save months of, of the, of the competitive bidding process. So we would negotiate with a particular contractor. We'd pick one, negotiate with them, develop a scope and fee, and if that's acceptable to staff, we'd bring that to council for review and approval. If you can't reach a negotiated price, then you break off negotiations and you can select the next one or go to a standard bid process. So what we're looking to do here is piggyback with the City of Prescott. Allow the town to procure for smaller construction projects and, and do it faster with, with the known entities that their qualifications have already been reviewed. The term of the contracts, the way Prescott set it up, it's a, it's a two-year initial contract, and then they can do annual renewals for three more years, so it'd be five years total before you go back out for the other process. We're looking for the maximum amount of a million dollars. Initially, staff had anticipated a five-hundred-thousand-dollar limit per job order, but we looked at the current projects and state statute allows up to a million dollars for a job order, so we wanted to maybe boost that to the million dollars, um, just to cover ourselves. City of Prescott set the three-million-dollar fiscal year limit on horizontal job order contracts. Their, their vertical contracts don't have any limit, but we figure we'll just set the three million. Their, their vertical contracts don't have any limit, but we figure we'll just set the three million per fiscal year. If we have more than that in a fiscal year, we probably need to go out to a bid if we have a big enough project for that. Potential contracts we're looking at here, I listed some that are in the current budget that we're considering for this. The old police building remodel has a budget of six hundred thousand. We, of course, hope to do it cheaper. And, but that would be one, we had looked for one of the vertical contractors to work on that. They could help us not only with the construction, but they could also do the drawings, hire someone to do the drawings underneath their umbrella. And so it'd save us double the procurement time. We've got some money in here for remodeling this building, Town Hall, hundred and fifty thousand. That'd be another one. The new parks shop building we're looking for, we've got a hundred thousand in design for this year, so we could write a job order to, to start that process, we think. Construction costs would be determined during that design process, and that would help us. We'd bring that to you in the next budget for your review and approval with a, a good known dollar amount for that cost. We've got a couple different parking lot projects that are around two hundred thousand. And then the library roof alone, I think, is going to be over fifty thousand. Normally with our roofs that we've done the past few years, they're under fifty thousand and we can just get three quotes. But the library roof's large enough that it's going to be over fifty thousand, so if we can't utilize a job order, we may have to go out to sealed bids, which takes time, and we can do that if we need to. But that's what we're looking for, and so the recommended action we'd look for is to approve the purchasing agreement. Again, we've got nine different contractor names in here for each job order contract services on public works projects for an amount not to exceed a million dollars per job and three million per fiscal year. And I think I think you can do that with one vote, realizing that it's nine different items because it's nine different contracts.
Okay, good question?
Not at all.
But any? Okay, no questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like to entertain a motion.
Okay, for those of you who thought you were going to spend the night here, watch this. Make a motion to approve cooperative purchasing's agreement, items D through L with one million dollar cap per each agreement.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Was there any nays? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No nays.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?